Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are live. And council chambers is still on mute.
Do we have anyone online? He says we're live. Do we have anyone online?
Not currently, no ma'am.
Are we trending yet?
That's for you to decide. I can't see that yet, so till tomorrow.
It's nice out there, huh?
It is. I didn't want to come back in.
It's warm. You should have left the door open.
Yeah.
Dave Ward, you're trying to figure out how long have you been buried? Two years or going on three?
Ah, we just hit two. Yep, yep. Nope, she actually wanted to come tonight.
Sure did.
I almost did, but I was, it was a crazy day and she had stuff to do, so.
Okay.
She needed to get parish processed.
We're gonna go ahead and start the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 27, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to local.
Council member Casanera?
Yeah.
Council member Moreno?
Here.
Council member Alvaro? Council members Devala?
Here.
And council member De La Fuente?
Here.
We're gonna go ahead and go on to visitors' comments.
Motion for Mary.
Motion for Mary to dismiss her for tonight's meeting.
We don't know anything.
Well, we don't know. She should put a call that way.
So we'll just.
Motion to excuse. For an excuse for Mary.
For an unexcused because she didn't call?
Unless you guys want an excuse.
Oh.
It's an excuse. She didn't call.
Unexcused? I have, um. Am I just wrong, Blake? I'm sorry.
A motion by.
A motion by Diana.
You should have had a penny.
I know. Second by.
Second.
Vera, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. So we're gonna go ahead and, um. Vote on the meeting agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
I second the motion. We have the page.
Just remember, we need to move study session, item B, to new business, item C. The preliminary budget presentation.
Consent agenda from A to C, all the way down. Need to say A to C. To vote on the meeting agenda.
I make a motion to approve. A to C. Considered agenda.
No, it's to amend the.
What is that A?
To amend the council meeting agenda to add C, which is the preliminary budget.
Okay, is that what you said, Josh?
Correct.
To amend.
So when you have a motion.
I need a motion.
I make the motion to approve.
To amend.
To amend the motion agenda.
So with the addition of item C to new business.
A to C.
With, with, so with, with, so adding item C to new business.
You guys want to do that over here?
We'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda. Adding the budget to, under new business, to the regular council meeting from study session.
That works.
I have a motion by Vera.
Second motion.
I have second by Antonio. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so we got that now. So we're gonna go ahead and, um. Do I go A and B and C and?
First, it's visitors.
Visitors' comments and anyone online.
So we don't, we don't have anyone online at this time, so.
So then we're gonna go ahead and go to. Number five, which is the consent agenda of approved study session minutes for Tuesday, September 13. A. A through D.
I'll make a motion. I have a motion. Approved consent agenda, A through D.
I have a motion by Vera.
Second motion.
Second by Antonio, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So we're gonna go on, no public hearing. Old business, none. New business? The water plant update presentation on page 27, 28.
All right. I think that's my cue. So I have copies of the presentation for you guys. Because sometimes it's helpful later, you're like, what did he say? And then you can come back and say, well, you told me. Okay, you guys have this as well. So Josh, if you can pull it up.
Ooh, that's a nice picture.
It's a nice one, yes.
All right, does that, does that work for Vaughn? All right, so, uh, City of Napton, let me do the big picture. So Josh, can you go to the first slide? Be back arrows until you get to the first.
Okay, this is not the first slide?
Nope. That's about slide eight. So, well, while Josh gets it set up, so the backstory of this is. Department of Health wants you to plan for your water system, so that you're not, when you do improvements, it's because it fits within the plan that you've set. And so it used to be every six years, you had to do an updated water system plan, where you look at everything in your system, and you decide where you're going, and then every six years later, you gotta do it again. Good news is, they have now changed it to 10 years. So while we've had to do one every six years up until now, once this one's approved, you'll have 10 years before you're required to do another one. So that's, that's the good news. We don't have to go through this quite as often, uh, which is, which is okay. If you really need one, it's because you're going like crazy and it's, it's worth it. So that's the big picture, and I'll get into kind of how we're gonna approach it, um, as, as we go here. So this is the City of Napton's water system plan presentation. The city contracted with us a while back to prepare this. We've been working on it, working with the city on, city staff on data, presented all, put it all together, and then now, after this, which your blessing, will submit it to Department of Health for their review. The way it will work is, they will review it, they'll send us a bunch of comments. Depending on who the state engineer is, you actually have a guy that doesn't comment as much. Some of them do, I can't see, we're on, we're on internet, but, but we'll get comments. And then we'll, we'll review the comments, we'll work on responses, we'll get it ready. We'll go back and forth till they're ready to improve it, and then they'll tell the city, hey, we're ready to approve it, you adopt it. Send it back to you guys, you adopt, formally adopt it, then they'll approve it, you'll get your letter of approval, and you'll be good to go for 10 years. So with that, let's, uh, let's jump into this. As you can see, Zaradusman was supposed to be here to help present, she had a family emergency, and so wasn't able to come, so you have to put up with an entire presentation of me. I'm disappointed she wasn't here, she's done a lot of work on this plan, and, and she started this presentation, but she had an emergency, she needed to attend to. So we'll get, we'll get her down here another time, to meet you guys. The goal of this presentation, I would love to have a conversation. If you guys don't have any questions, I'll kind of move more quickly through it. If you have questions, we can stop and talk. Water system plan is mostly tons of writing and tables, which make an incredibly boring PowerPoint presentation. So I tried to put a lot of pictures in and hit the high point details at a council level appropriate detail. We're not gonna talk about everything in the water supply, we'll be here all through tomorrow. We can try to really just highlight the big, the big picture that's relevant at a council level. But if you guys want to know more information, we can, I can, I can slow down and talk as we go. Okay, cool. Go to the next slide, Josh. This is, uh, this is an overview of what we're gonna talk about tonight. So a water system plan is nine chapters long plus an appendix. If you notice here, I don't have nine chapters on this, we're not gonna talk about some of the chapters. So we're gonna, we're gonna do mainly like, the main kind of arc of the water system plan is, chapter one, what's your water system? What do you have? What's your existing facility? In chapter two, looking at population projections, where's this? How's the city gonna grow, and how does that translate into water use? City's going fast or slow, that's gonna mean more or less water use. And so that's kind of where we go in chapter two. Chapter three, we say, all right, we're anticipating this, you know, how much water use we're anticipating over the next 10 and 20 years? How does our current facility match up against that? Can, can we meet it or not? Will we be able to provide that water or not? That's chapter three. The other part of chapter three is, what kind of condition deficiencies are there? So maybe your system is, has plenty of capacity, but it's also old, it's about to break, and so you need to look at replacing some, some facilities. That's kind of, that's kind of where we're at, chapter three. Chapter four is the capital improvements. You say, all right, we know, we're gonna have this, you know, X amount of water use, we know, these are how our facilities measure up against that. What do we need? What type of projects do we need to be able to, to meet that? How, how does those, those deficiencies translate into projects? And then finally, the financing chapter, you know, it's the million, the million dollar question, how are you gonna pay for it, right? And that's kind of the main arc. The chapters you notice are missing here are four through seven. Those are chapters the DOH requires, and we're gonna talk about chapter four a little bit in the next council agenda item. Chapter five is wellhead protection, we're kind of updating what you had from the last one, chapter six is O and M. Okay, we're kind of rolling with a lot of what we had in the last, kind of similar, or kind of standard, industry standard kind of stuff. And chapter seven is developer standards, and so basically, we're taking developer standards, we already have. So many impelled, they'll approve them, it'll make, it'll make approvals like easier later. I just say that like, it's not, not worth us all staying all night talking about. That will, and that will be in the plan, and so we'll focus on these three chapters tonight, or these five, excuse me, wow, five chapters tonight. Any questions so far? All right, cool. Next slide, please. So this is a, this is a brief overview of your water system, and again, please appreciate the beautiful view courtesy of our drone. We, it's amazing, you can take some very cool shots with a drone. You have three wells, wells four, five, and six. They're all, you know, they're capacities up there, you have a combined capacity of all your wells are around 670 gallons per minute. If they're running, the wells are running 24/7 through the summer, it's probably a little below 670 because they, they get tired over time. But that's your approximate well capacity of the three wells combined. You have two reservoirs, one and two. One, two is the one that was built a couple of years ago. One is the, the older one, and then, and then there's the antique one there, but it doesn't have any water, it's not connected to the system or anything, it's, it's, uh.
Antique.
It looks cool. And between those two, you have 1.8 million gallons of storage. And, and we'll get into it, but really, that, that's a lot of storage, and that, your well capacity is kind of undersized for a city of, of your size, and that's why we're looking at, at well seven. Talk about more, but part of the way you offset is because you have a lot of storage. And so those, those high days, when everybody's, there's a fire and everybody's filling their pool, you know, wells can't keep up, but the storage kind of evens things out and helps you get through. You also have a recirculation pump that keep, you know, the reservoirs are different height, and so the recirculation pump balances that out, and your, and your booster pump station. At this point, the booster pump station is purely for emergencies. If for some reason the reservoir levels are really low, you can turn the booster pumps on and get some pressure. But I talked to your operations staff about this, like, we only want to do that if it's low and rising. If it's low, and there's no more water coming in, we don't really want to tune the booster pumps on and drain it all the way to zero. Rather there be a little bit of pressure than no pressure, but it's there. And in the right circumstances, it would be useful. You've got your treatment system, which is, is a sodium hypochlorite dosing system required by DOH for chlorination. You've got your telemetry, which is, I like to call the brain of the water system. So at, at the park, inside the whole booster pump station building, there's a screen, and I'll show you a picture of it here. And that's the brain that's controlling it, says, oh, the reservoir level's low, turn the wells on. Oh, the reservoir's full, turn the wells off. Oh, the, what, we tried to turn the wells on and they didn't do it, send an alarm. And that's where, you know, it was, a couple of months ago, we found it was going to an old city phone, it was, the alarms weren't going to anybody, and so, or they were going to the mayor's phone. Why does this thing keep calling me? Because it was back from when Adon was the water operator.
That thing was going on all hours.
Yeah, yeah, and so now, now it goes to, now it goes to the appropriate public work staff. So that something breaks, high priority, it lets them know they can go deal with it quickly. That's the telemetry system, that's the computer brain behind everything. And then finally, your distribution system, that's all the pipes in the road, and the service lines, the meters, that's what takes the water from your wells and reservoirs and gives it out to all the citizens. Any questions on that? All right, next slide. Josh, so this is your, this is a, this is the map of your distribution system. You can probably see it a little better on the handouts than you can on the screen. Basically, it's the color-coded, color-coded, and also the different dashes and dots tell you that the material and the, um, the location of the different water veins. And so you'll see the solid lines are PVC, the dashed are cast iron, that kind of thing. That, and on the next slide, is the North African towns, you can see them both there. The water supply plan will have one big figure of all of it, but it doesn't really fit on a, I put it on a slide all at once, and you won't see anything because it'll be too small. Okay. Next, we're gonna, that's kind of the chapter one things, real, and that's your water system, big picture, that's what you got right now. The city's invested a lot of money in its water system over the last 10 years. And in some ways, you'll, you'll still see that reflected in, um, anyway, we'll get into that. Don't get too far ahead. So Josh, you're on the next slide, we'll talk about the planning data, population projections and planning data. So if, on this slide, you will see, um, the city's population over since 1910.
Thank you.
Since 1910, you know, the city's had some ups and downs, but it's generally been trending up, you know, over, 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 over the last hundred plus years. Kind of plateaued from 2010 to 2020, you can kind of see it, there, there really wasn't as much population growth that decade. But I think you can attest the fact that there's not a lot of construction over the last couple of years. It seems like the, the recession in 2008 kind of stalled everything, and now developers are just going crazy, both, both here and elsewhere, and so, um. You know, that's kind, that's kind of where we're at, and so we looked at your comprehensive plan, had a, a pretty low growth rate for Napton, 2.6 or 2.7%. Which seemed pretty low, given the amount of just houses that are getting built. And so for this plan, we went ahead and said, all right, that would be, you have to be consistent with comprehensive plan. That would be consistent, but we can be conservative and go with a higher growth rate, because that just means we're preparing for even more growth, right? We could be below the comprehensive plan, but I think we're arguing we can be above it. So we used the growth rate of 1.5%, which is, is more consistent as well, our studies are looking at right now. So you go to the next slide, you can see what that looks like then projected out, um, over the next 20 years. And so you, you can see it kind of just continually picks up where we're off coming into 2010. You were at about the same growth rate coming into 2010, plateaued for the last decade. This is saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna pick up where we left off and keep going, and you see you're up close to 3,200 people in 20 years. Maybe you grow faster than that, maybe you don't. Some, you know, if you grow really, really fast, then, then you have to do a water supply plan again sooner. If not, you will, this is a 20-year projection, we're only planning for 10 years, so in 10 years, we'll come back, we'll do this over again. Say, all right, how much should we actually grow since the last water supply? Now, what do we think we're gonna grow and project that out another 20 years? So it's kind of this just third process. So we take all of this, this population data, look at all of your water connections, your water use, and, and, and generate something called ERUs. So Josh, if you can go to the next slide. So ERUs are something people talk about a lot with water system planning, but a little bit confused, so I want to stop and just make sure we're on the same page, because I'm gonna use that acronym with the rest of the presentation, and I want to make sure we're on the same page with what I mean. So ERU is an equivalent residential unit. And in a nutshell, what we do is, if you think about it. You might have a whole bunch of, you might have 10 market actions, right? And if nine of them are single-family residences, and the 10th one is a business. That business might use two, or three, or four, or 10 times half as much water as a single-family residence, right? And so just taking how many connections you have isn't really gonna translate into water use, because we don't know, is that an industrial connection that uses? The amount, same amount of water as 100 houses, or is it just another house, right? We don't know. So when ERU, what we do to come up with the ERUs in the system is, we take all of your single-family use, single-family houses, and then we turn the rest of your water use, the rest of your connections, into an equivalent number of single-family houses. So it's saying, if this was all, if, if the city only had single-family houses, this is how many they would have to the equivalent amount of water use, and it normalizes it on a single-family house basis. So that way, for instance, if, if, for those who are cultured, whatever they're called now, is using, you know, 10 times as much water as a single-family house, they're 10 ERUs. But they're the same as 10 single-family houses. And so that, that lets you normalize it.
So how do they figure out for housing types, like the long-term housing, how do they figure out how many families?
So we, we do the, the same thing, actually. So the multi, because a lot of times, a multifamily unit is gonna use less per dwelling unit than a single-family house. So we, so we'd say if it's an apartment building with six dwelling units, it's not gonna use six ERUs, it's not the same as six houses, but it's also not the same as one. And so we begin, we take total water use for the multifamily dwellings, divide it by the consumption per single-family residence. And so then maybe if it was six, six units in an apartment building, that might be four ERUs. You know, more than one, but less than six, and that's a great, that's a great question. Yeah, yeah, and so we take all of the system and convert it into an equivalent number of single-family house use, essentially. Does that make sense? It's kind of, it's kind of. It's kind of weird. And so what you'll see here is then, you know, we took those population projections, and we converted it into an ERU projection. And so essentially, we assumed, single-family houses were gonna grow at 1.5%. And that businesses and some of the other uses would, would grow proportionate. You know, if there were more people moving to Napton, there'll be more businesses, something like that. And so you'll see our ERU projections, so right now, you know, we project for this year, and we're having to work off previous year's data, for this year, we're projecting it'd be around 954 ERUs. So you already have 580 connections you're billing, some of those connections are worth more than one single-family house use of water, and so you have more like 954 ERUs. And then as you see then, as we grow, we project out 2033, 2043, you're looking at something closer to 1,245 ERUs in, in 20 years. So it's, it's good growth, it's not crazy growth, but it's good growth. So the next slide then, all right, ERUs are great, but we don't even know, how does that translate to water use? So basically, we, we convert all your water on a ERU basis, and then we come up with kind of the key numbers that we need to size your system to determine if your system has capacity to meet the future growth. And you'll see them across, I'll just talk about the, the columns across there, you've got average data man. For that, we basically take water use an entire year and divide it by 365, just on an average day, how much water are you use? Really, will there ever be a day you use that much? Maybe not, you know, the winter, use way less than average day, summer, way more. But this just is saying, overall, how much water are we gonna use per day on average? And so there's some, some water system components, that's the thing to look at. Next is max day demand. In Eastern Washington, that will always happen in the summer, typically, July is your max day demand. And you'll have that one day in the summer where everybody's filling up, you know, it's when, usually it's when it hits 100. For a couple of days, everybody's filling up the swimming pool, and watering the grass, and there's a fire. And that, that's usually gonna be the day you're gonna have max day demand, when everybody's using water like crazy. And so you can see right now, you're about a million gallons at max day demand. And that's like, your wells going 24/7, and you might not make it. So that, that max day demand, your wells can't even keep up with, just for, for reference of, of that. And then looking out 20 years, you're looking at more like, um, a million three, million four for your max day demand. We also converted that into a, a, a flow rate, the max day demand, but in gallons, we have, first number's gallons per day, the other's gallons per minute. And, and so just for reference, you know, you see in, right now, so 2022, we have 722 gallons per minute to projected max day demand for this year. Your well capacity, 670, so that's why, that's why, on those hot days, the pressure comes down a little bit, and then you need a couple of days, and it catches up again. The last number there is peak hour demand. So that, that, you know, we like to say, that's on that max day, most likely, it's gonna be probably that max day, when everybody is filling their swimming pools, and irrigating their lawn, and taking showers, and then there's a fire. And all of a sudden, they're pulling water out of a couple hydrants, and so that's where you're gonna look at the peak water use in the entire year for an hour. And so that's your, your peak hour demand, you're at 1,300 GPM now, you're looking at over 1,700 GPM in the 20-year range. So we don't have to talk about these numbers a lot, but just know these numbers are essentially what we're evaluating your water system against. This is, this is the projections of where the system's going, now let's look at your, your system, and can it meet those? Make sense? Okay. Excellent. Next slide, one more, I forgot. One more thing we have to talk about, and that's leakage. So Department of Health has a standard, if you have more than 500 connections, you have to have your three-year average leakage be below 10%. The way you calculate leakage is, the public work staff, the corps, how much water they pump out of the wells each day. When you sum that up for the whole year, you get how much water you pumped out of the wells for the whole year. City hall staff are sending out bills, you know, this folks, they read, they read the meters, they send out bills, and they know how much water they bill customers for. We compare those two numbers, and theoretically, they would be exactly the same, right? But if there's some leakage in the pipes, you're gonna have pumped more water than you've sold. And so we can just bet, you want to be able to sell all the water you pump, because you have to pay electricity, you pump it out of the ground, you want to be able to sell it to, to the water customers. No city has zero yet leakage, there's always some leakage. The DOH's standard is, they want you to be under 10% leakage. But good news and bad news. The good news, the bad news is, you're not under 10%. And so as part of this plan, we have to, to document to Department of Health, your, your plan, we put some steps, a lot of stuff you're already gonna do. You know, things like trying to track your, your meter, you know, is, is it a recording error? Did they just miss some recording somewhere, is there, is there an issue with that? Try to track, if you have somebody pulling water off a hydrant for construction, make sure you track that water and record that, so that that doesn't count against your, your leakage. The good news is, this isn't the worst DSL on a water supply plan I've been working on right now. Yeah, another city who shall remain unnamed hit 45% the last few years, which means almost half the water that they're paying for, they're not selling. So we just replace some water mains, and we're hoping that fixes leaks and it comes down. So 17% is high, uh, it's not crazy, though. And it's, that, that helps us, you know, that's one way, you know, county commissioner comes in and wants to give you money. That's why, as, as a water guy, I'm like, great, let's replace some water mains, see if we can fix some of those leaks. You know, look at, look at the oldest mains and see if we can target that to, to the mains that are more likely to be leaky, and hopefully have that come down.
So that won't affect the money that they want to give the city because we have a leak?
No, that's, it more helps than hurts, because you say, we've got a problem, please give us money to fix it. It, it doesn't, it doesn't stop you from doing anything, it, it, it's more of, it's a selling point in trying to get money to fix these. And we won't get into it tonight, you can pay to have their, their companies to come and do leak detection, and they can trace it, try to find the leaks, because, you know, one, a few small leaks, you know, think of, one gallon per minute isn't very much water. But that's 1,400 gallons a day, so when you multiply that times a year, I did the math once, and it's like 500,000 gallons or something like, it's a lot of water that just a couple of weeks can be. So that's where, as leaks are reported, if somebody sees water bubbling up somewhere in town, like, that's where the public work staff will go fix it, and that may bring their leakage down. So that's the, the good news, the bad news is the good news. We only had two years of data. Previous to 2018, there wasn't enough data, public work staff coming and going, there wasn't enough data to really be able to check. So that's why we only had, now twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty for data for this, but we were like seventeen percent both years, and so it was fairly consistent. But we would, would recommend to continue to try to fix leaks as they come up, and consider paying for leak detections, see if you can find leaks. And when you get the opportunity to replace water mains, try to replace the old, the old water mains that are more likely to be the ones where the leakage is happening. So, um, and as you can see there, in twenty-nineteen, you lost nineteen million gallons. In twenty-twenty, you lost about twenty-four million. Now, you know, some of that is when the guys have to go flush hydrants, that doesn't necessarily get recorded. So that, that isn't just purely leakage, it's, it's water that's not, doesn't show up in a bill to a customer. And so that's one of, one of the recommendations is, when they do that, try to, they can estimate the water, try to track that water. So the next time you do, do a DSL assessment, you say, alright, here's how much water we produce, here's how much water we sold, here's how much water we know got used, but we didn't sell, and that'll bring your DSL down. So that's just our, our recommendation, um, to try to, try to get that number down under ten. Alright, ooh, man, I, one more slide, sorry I put this in here, it was a good slide. This is your water use per well for twenty-twenty. And so, you, you can see month by month, you see it, you know, January, February, very little water use. Soon as irrigation starts in April, it just shoots up. July is typically the peak water use month, and it starts to tail off, yep, yep. Then by October, it's coming down, then November, December, you know, there's much less. It's broken up, you can see the total, and you can see the split between the wells. Just wanted you to have that as a visual, kind of visual representation of, of your water use across the year.
So well five is the one that gets used the most?
Yes, and then remember that the flow rates are different. So a lot of times, recently through twenty-twenty, I, for the most part, I believe, the wells were all run same times, they'd all come on, they'd all go off. But because well five produces twice as much as well four, it's gonna produce a lot more water. And so that's why, you know, you got, you got through the summer of this year without well four, which was kind of a miracle. If well five had quit, it would have been panic time. And so there were some things, you know, I was working with Public Works Lead a little bit, like keeping an eye on well five, and some things that we've done in the past, and he did a great job of making sure that that, like, I told him, this happens, call me, if it gets to that level, and he did, he called me, they turned it down, and then it was good, and he got through the summer. Because well five, essentially, you need bubble wrap on well five, until you, until you have another well, you can't, you can't live without it. But, good news, you're right, ready for some good news? It's not all fum and gloom, I have good news and bad news tonight, go to the next slide.
It was a bad news, thank you.
Shoot, okay, I wanna go change the presentation. So this is the, this is the good news, and we talk about all those, those projections, and those, you know, water use, and, and the good news is, Maptin spent a lot of money on the water system, right? Like ten million bucks over the last twenty years. And the good, good news of that was, it was like sixty-seven percent grant, but still, it was a lot of money. And you were paying on loans for the rest of that. Here are your water system components that we have to evaluate for, for DOH. And we've got source capacity, you've got water rights, like total water rights for the year, and your instantaneous water rights, your different storage capacities. The column with available capacity is what you have, and the other columns are what you need. And anything that's bold on this table is a deficiency. So if you look at it, you have no bold numbers. You have capacity, that's the good news. You, you, you don't have any capacity deficiencies. There's some other issues we'll talk about, but from a capacity perspective, you're in good shape. That was the good news. I did, I presented actually last Tuesday night, a different water system plan, and it got bold all over the place. It's like, there isn't one project, like, well, you need water rights, you need multiple new water sources, and you need...
Smaller town than us, or bigger?
Bigger, bigger, and, and they've got like multiple, like hundred, couple, like a couple hundred housing developments to go in, so their use is just, they're, they're being conservative in planning, like crazy growth. But they're like right on the edge of capacity on a number of things. And so they have to look at a number of different things, you know.
Don't they have to watch on how much housing they can, they can have with, I mean, with that problem of water?
So they, that, exactly, and that's why they need to act to try to stay ahead of it.
So are we okay if we want developments, or are we okay with ours?
That's a great question, I actually have a slide to talk about it. You're pretty close, right now, actually. And that's where the well seven, or the well seven and eight, or I think we talked about maybe making that two wells if we can fit it in the funding, will be what, what you really need. So what you'll notice here, those first two, I say source before well seven, and source after well seven. It says the available capacity for, before well seven is eight-hundred-and-four gallons per minute. That is different than the six-hundred-and-seventy I told you had. If you just look at your, straight up your well capacity, six-hundred-and-seventy gallons per minute, you can't even currently meet your max day demand. But, I should really, you have a whole bunch of storage. And so what we did for this, so essentially, if we submitted your water system plan right now, without looking at this in more depth, they would say, alright, Maptin, no more connections until you have well seven. You, you can't, you don't have capacity. So what we did was, and I, it's a kind of a complicated analysis, I won't go through the, I'll put the spreadsheet up, don't worry. That's what engineers like to talk about, is their spreadsheets. We did a, a, a multi-day equalizing storage. Essentially, what we looked at was, you know, your water use is like this, right, with a high day. And so what we looked at was, you have enough storage capacity that when you have the high that max day, exactly, you can use the available storage, you have so much water sitting there, it's like having a lot of money in the bank. The one bill comes in you can't pay, you pull it out of the bank, and you keep saving it back up. And so that's the effective capacity that you get is eight-hundred-and-four gallons per minute, which is enough for now. Doesn't give you a lot of room to grow, but it gets you by. So we, we incorporated that analysis in the water system plan, so that you don't get a connection more toward you.
You say eight-hundred-and-point-some gallons per minute, for each pump, or for the whole seven pumps together?
So you have three pumps, three wells.
You're gonna combine the whole three together?
So those three together can pump six-hundred-and-seventy gallons per minute. When you, when you look at what the contribution of the reservoirs are, or, you know, during that max day, the effective capacity is about like, as if you had eight-hundred-and-four gallons per minute between your wells.
So now we're getting six-hundred-and...
Seventy from the wells.
And then using three wells only?
Yes.
Four, five, six?
Yep, yep, so wells one and two are complete history, they no longer exist. Well two is where the reservoir is. Well three is there, but it's an emergency source, it has high nitrates, you pretty much have to get DOH permission to pump it, and it doesn't produce that much water even if it did. So it's been used for construction water, a bunch of projects. We'll look at this from Main Street next year, rather than them, you know, they need water to keep the dust down. Rather than them using precious city potable water, what we've done with previous, in previous years with contractors, they just go over well three, turn it on, fill their water truck up, turn it off. It's high nitrates, but that doesn't matter if they're spraying it on the roads, and so they can use it to keep the dust down. So it's, it's, it's useful, but it's an emergency source, you have to get DOH blessing for it, and you can turn it off. No, that's a good question, so your effective capacity with the multi is like eight-hundred-ish GPM. So that gets you, you're okay for now, sir.
Yes, one more question. In Washington Street, I see a, a weird box, right in Fifth, in the corner.
Okay.
That always in summer dripped a lot of water. Oh, that's irrigation water, if I understand it right?
Probably if it's a weird box, it's Sunnyside Valley Irrigation District, so it's not city water.
Yeah, exactly, that's the point.
Yep.
So, there was no way that, that they can face or move that line, or they're gonna have service for some people, have service for irrigating the, the lungs or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, the more people that could be using SDID water, that Safe City Water. Sorry, is that a question?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Cause I know, I see some, in the summer, I see a lot of water, yes.
Yep.
They coming out the way to my house, even during the road on the street. Yeah, because they overflow, if they have a lot of garbage, they overflow, and the water flows out, and they go away.
And there are a couple of SDID mainlines through Hampton, so the more that they can provide, can provide irrigation service, you know, that Safe City Water, that's, would be most excellent.
Well I have one right on the corner of West Street.
And my question is, I say, that we don't have, that we don't use that water for tying summer, because the water is so dirty in summer?
Yeah, it's not potable, it's irrigation water.
Except for lawn, though.
It is, it is, it's great for a lawn, but, but it's not, it's not the city's water either, so number one, we don't have the legal right to use it. And two, it's, it's, we have to treat it first, if we wanted to use it, maybe something, that makes sense, but...
Yeah.
Somebody else walks you door and gives you another million bucks, you know, theirs.
Right, so I'm gonna keep pushing for two.
Yep, yep, please do, you know, truly, you know, you're like, you said one, a little over, so how far over a million?
Yes, a hundred and twenty-one.
Is that one point two, is that one point three? How much can we ask for?
Yep.
And so, so then, the, the news is then, though, after you get well seven, or, you know, we talked about this, I think the last time I was down, you know, looking at the hydrogeology, you may not get as much from well seven as, as would be ideal, the aquifer is just not thick enough to get a lot of draw down there. And so what we're gonna look at, what we're, we're in the process of looking at is, can we squeeze two wells out of the available funding the city has? It's gonna be very tight. But if we put the wells next to your existing, cause I want four-hundred GPM. Our goal for well seven is four-hundred GPM. And so if we put the wells, they're gonna be shallow wells, they're only gonna be like a hundred-and-fifty feet deep, it's like the shallow water. We put them next to some of the other wells, we may be able to use your existing buildings and save some money, and, and, you know, have it close and get you two wells out of it. So I say well seven, but it may be well seven and eight. And what we're assuming then is you get four-hundred gallons per minute from that. So what you've got, currently got six-hundred gallons per minute, six-hundred-and-seventy, that'll take you to a thousand-and-seventy, which will be a big help, looking at your max day demands and looking to the future. So, that's your capacity, the good news, there's no bull on the table. Any questions on that? Alright, next slide. The other thing we have to look at is condition, not just capacity, not just how much can it pump, but what's the condition it's in. And this is where you'll see some of, some of your issues. Some, some of the facilities like well four is an older, generally, an overall older installation. Done some upgrades, we tried to keep it going, but it's an older installation. And so I'm just gonna briefly talk through some of these condition deficiencies that we perceive, and then we'll get into the capital improvements and talk about kind of the projects that you should consider, and how those might get scheduled. Very much here, what we're trying to do, before we get into it, well seven's clearly the biggest thing you need, right? The good news is, you already have it funded, it's already in design. After that, there's a bunch of stuff you should think about, you know, you're placing water mains to get your DSL down, all of that. And nothing's a screaming emergency. And so, um, if I put the projects, we don't wanna do your projects right now. I put all the projects way out in the future and say they're not important. If you decide you do wanna get one, you won't get money, because your planning document says they're not important. If I say, they're really important, happen to happen next year, it will kind of raise the alarm maybe more than you want, and it might commit you to a, a plan that's a little too aggressive. And so through all of this, we're trying to advise you of, of the deficiencies that we perceive in the system, or the potential concerns, um, give you a reasonable plan for here's how you could address them, and put them a, a few years out. So if it's using time, you wanna do it, let's go after funding. Maybe they keep walking in door with another million bucks, and we can do some of them. If not, and you wanna delay them a couple years, you've got to delay them. So that's kind of how we approach this, and I'm not trying to say, oh, the sky's falling, you need to do a bunch of stuff, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't tell you of, of some of the deficiencies and potential risks that we see in the future. So, number one is source reliability. Once you have well seven, this will get a lot better. But what we've seen from the well four outage this year, well four's an old well, and it has some issues with it. And so it's, it's kept you going, it's done good work. But some of what happened this year, you know, essentially, you replaced the pump and motor eight years ago. Eight years later, it burned up. So what we recommend, you know, every five years, probably rehabilitating the well, pulling it, checking it, making sure it's in good shape, just to keep it so you don't have, like this, your, it burns up going into summer, and you have to limp through the summer. And, and, and also with well five, just making sure, and like put bubble wrap on well five, make sure that it's getting the TLC it needs. It's in good shape, it's running, make sure it gets some, some checkups and some rehabilitation. Reservoir one, you know, the good news is, reservoir two is your brand-new reservoir, it has a lot of storage. Reservoir one has some issues, um, you know, seismic codes have changed. The reservoir foundation wouldn't meet current seismic codes. Coatings are literally sloughing off on the inside. When we did reservoir two, we did a little bit of like the highest priority work on reservoir one. We had, we were just like squeezing the last few dollars to get that done. There was no money to do a more extensive replacement at well one, or reservoir one. And so, you know, it was like we had to do the highest priorities, and just note, hey, this reservoir will need some love at some point. And, and so I actually had a flake in my office of coatings that were just sloughed off from the inside of the tank. And the third thing there is, there's some safety equipment. If you notice, new reservoir, there's a cage around the ladder, right? Old reservoir, just the ladder up the side. I'm not eager to give that ladder a try. It does have the safety climb for the harness, but it has a cage around it. Current OSHA codes are that there is a landing every fifty feet. So on the new reservoir, you'll see you got landing, up, landing over, so others doesn't have it. So there's some safety things, and if you're gonna recode it, makes sense to also do a little bit of work and bring it up to, up to code. The third, third thing is just your coatings on your reservoirs. Even the new reservoir, it's, you know, four or five years old, you need to be regularly checking the coatings, you know, every five years, to make sure. Your old reservoir, reservoir one, you know, has significant coating deficiencies. Reservoir two shouldn't, but you just stay up on that so that it doesn't become a, a critical item. Next item is, you've had some operational issues with your coordination system over the last few years. We're working with public works staff to, to address that, there's some ideas about how to address that, the city's gonna start it down the path. But we recommend, we perceive that there's some operational issues that have been threatening the headache. Heading for public works than heading for me, uh, we've, we've spent many, many, many times troubleshooting that system. Your telemetry system is in great shape, you just replaced it a few years ago. Fortunately, it's computer, right, which as you know, if you're phoned, you buy your phone, a week later, it's outdated. And so with your telemetry system, it's good now, it'll be good for the future. But technology, telemetry systems just, just change, just like other technology things, they're outdated almost immediately. And at some point, you get the problem, they're not selling parts, and then you have to do upgrades. So that's not a, that's why I put the long term, that's not a sky's falling, old man, gotta go play golf. Your telemetry system's good, um, but, but you have to be looking, if we're looking out ten to twenty years, you have to look at, yeah, your telemetry system will need some work at some point. Your distribution system, get into this in more detail, but you have fire flow deficiencies. You know, your required fire flow is fifteen-hundred gallons per minute for two hours, and there are parts of town where, you know, we, we divided the model, looked at, looked at this, and we'll get into this more, but there are parts of town where you can't, you couldn't get fifteen-hundred GPM, you don't meet that standard. You also have a lot of AC, which is asbestos cement, and CI, which is cast iron water mains, that tends to be older. AC is great, sometimes, very fragile, sometimes, it splits a little bit unpredictably. Fortunately for you, only about three-thousand feet, there are cities that have like half their system is AC, and that's not fun, because it's fairly stable until you dig it up, and then it may do all kinds of unpredictable things. You have a lot of cast iron, and, and, and cast iron generally has been in the ground for a long time, so some of your rust issues are probably coming from the cast iron. A lot of your leaks maybe, because, you know, if it sits there for seventy years, you're gonna start to rust through some of the old things and get little, little leaks. And then finally, what we talked about before, you're above the DSL standard for DOH. So that's not a capacity issue, but it is, it is a condition issue. And the last thing is, you're, just the time it takes to do your water meter reading, like we talked about earlier. Now it's only a day and a half with much efficiency, but, but it still takes some time, pulls guys away, and there's some inefficiency there. You know, they have to write the number down, make sure they read it right, write it down, bring it off, it's there, it's, it's, and I don't know if you've automated the system more than that, but it's intrinsic, like it parks on the meter, or something like that. It, it just is a, is a more complicated process. So, as you can tell, these are, I'm saying it's a deficiency, but there's gonna be a project to sort of solve each of these. But I, I wanna just highlight that. The good news is, you have plenty of capacity. The bad-ish news is, there's still some condition issues and some, some things to be thinking about over the next ten to twenty years. Well, there, there you go, so, so, actually, so it's actually, so if you wanna take a nap or something, the rest of the... If you go to the next slide, another way to look at, at condition is, is called something called asset management. This is something that wasn't in previous water system plans, DOH has just started requiring it. And essentially, it's, they look at each of your, your main facilities of your water system, and we look at how long, what its expected life is, how old it is, so where, where are we at in that expected life? What is its consequence of failure on a scale of one to five? And what is its likelihood of failure on a one to five? So if something's very important, you're gonna give it a five for consequence of failure. If it, like well five, has consequence of failure, a five. If it fails, we're in big trouble. But you look at the likelihood of failure, is well five likely to fail? No, so give it like a three, right? It's kind of in the middle, wells are always gonna have issues, they need, they need maintenance. And so then you, you kind of multiply those two numbers together, your five for how important it is, your three for how likely it is to fail. It gets you a score of fifteen. And so it lets you look at all of your system, and, and come up with a number to kind of let you see, okay, what's the highest priorities? So after what happened at well four this year, I would say it's, it's consequence of failure is, is pretty high. You got through the summer, but another summer, it might have been hard. And its likelihood of failure is probably about a five, there's a good chance, without regular rehabilitation maintenance, it's gonna do it again. And so that's your high, kind of a high score of a twenty-five, right? It's, it's critical, and it has a good chance of failure.
How many years back did they do a replacement on this?
They replaced the pump and motor in twenty fifteen, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. And so it's, it's an old well, there's some biological issues, some, some bacteria growth in the well, iron eating bacteria. It used to be a thousand GPM back in the day, but over time, its, its capacity has come down. So twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, in that timeframe, they put a new pump in, and it ran great all this time. But our suspicion is that, that the pores on the wells, you know, you think about the, the well casing, kind of it clogged over time. So that brought the capacity down to the point where it sucked air, and then that just destroyed the pump and burned up the motor. So we tried to just replace the pump, city had a backup motor, but that, the motor, that motor had some issues, didn't work, so we had to replace all of it. City had a backup motor, but that motor, that motor had some issues, didn't work, so we had to replace all of it.
Yeah, so when you're looking at this, we have to embrace it.
Pardon?
How much money are we looking at?
The quote we got, we got quotes, I don't have them in the top of my head. The contractor that, that the city, the city hired for this is, is really good, they're good to work with, they're the ones that did it before. They're, they're fair. I don't remember, we're talking close to, we had to rebuild it, so, so let me back up. I think, I think it was around forty-ish thousand total. Got paid for new pump, a new motor, they had to put it down in the well. They, they videoed the well, so they looked at, they videoed it before and after so that they could see, you know, what the issues were. And then, and then how, what good they did, you know, and assess it if it needed more. They put brushes down the well and brushed it out to try to clean the metal casing off. Built out all the extra sand that was in there, you know, because if you think about it, you're cleaning it, you're making a budget free, they pull all that out. And then they chlorinated it, they super chlorinated it, so they put a real high concentrated chlorine solution in, try to kill any kind of bacteria growth. And then put the pump and motor back in. And now they're having some sampling issues there. I was talking, I talked to, on your public work speed earlier about it, I talked, I was talking to Josh about it before. It just kind of trouble getting a good sample back. But this happened the last time, so you already have the infrastructure there. You have a plan in place with Department of Health. When I told, the public works lead, I told Josh, just need to have the conversation with health to say, right, same issue again, here's our plan from before, we need to go back to that plan, is that okay? And so I told them both, you call your Department of Health engineer and make sure that that works for him. I'm happy to be part of that conversation if you'd like, but, or if they would like, but. Then finally, if they'll be able to put well four back online, which would be really phenomenal. Really, really a blessing that dropped through the summer.
And then the parts were being, were being delayed because of the whole COVID thing also.
That's always an issue. Honestly, Schneider Water Services is the contractor. They found, they sourced different motors and they found something they could get. They did a really good job of getting it as fast as they could. Right now, the last couple of weeks, we've just been in a hole. First, we're having somebody get out there and figure out what was going on. And once they got out there and figured out what was going on, then it was getting rescheduled for the rehabilitation, getting that scope. Now we're just waiting, it's been ready to go for a couple of weeks, but we're waiting. They take a sample, they wait for it, it comes back, oh, it wasn't good, all right, rechlorinate the well, try again. You know, sample, wait a few more days, it comes back. And so then the sample, the, the retry sample came back bad again on, on Friday. And so that's where, you know, again, this happened. The last time we replaced the pump, understanding based on what I've seen is the exact same thing. So that's why I provided, I think, there you run that email as well, that the old, the old plan that was used before. The city used that until the samples were good and then off it. And then just recommend that you work with your Department of Health engineer and get the, get the okay to go back to that, that setup. So that was a tangent. And we all, well, of course, been the issue of the summer, so at some point we're going to need to talk about that. On the order of that, they'll fill us at the end for, I think, the time they, they put in. But they, they gave us an estimate, it was in that order. There was some more rehabilitation, it would have been about another twenty thousand, but when they looked at it, they didn't, it was, it was, it would benefit the city. And so they didn't, they didn't go to that step. So what we would recommend then, well, I don't know, I'll walk into that, getting ahead of myself. So that's what asset management is. So if you go to the next slide, Josh, there is this big, ugly, messy table. Here's your asset management. So there will be a quiz actually at the end of this presentation, so please study the table. So all I'm just doing is this table, I said I wouldn't be a dead by PowerPoint with tables. The main thing to see in this table is, is just that you have a plan. You know, some of this isn't exact, but the idea is to get you a number. And the main number to look at in all of this is if you go under your bottom right hand corner, there's four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty. Essentially, that's your yearly cost. We look at, you know, when do the things seem to be replaced, how much are they going to cost? You know, your reservoir has, I think we said a hundred or a seventy-five year life, right? It's, it's going to last you a very long time. There's still that little bit of money each year that you theoretically will need to spend eventually to replace it. And so the exact number doesn't matter as much, but that four hundred and ninety thousand is about how much you should be spending every year on your water system so that you don't get to the point where all of a sudden everything is broken and you have to spend a whole bunch of money on it. There may be years you spend less, years you spend more, but this is kind of the average you should hit. That's where, you know, a few years back, twenty sixteen, we spent way more than four hundred and ninety thousand on our system. So that, that was your high year and then you will have some lower years. But, but this is just for budgeting purposes, if you think about it in your head, this is how much cities should average over the long term on capital purposes of our system, so that you keep it in good shape, you never get to the spike. Everything's falling apart. Okay? That's the main upshot of asset management. Any questions so far? This is where I really wish I could have come, so then you wouldn't have to hear me talk for all this little time, you get some variety. Unfortunately, you're stuck with me tonight. So let's go on to capital improvements. We've already hinted a lot of this. We're going to go back through all of your water system components, just like we talked about at the beginning. And talk about the capital improvements that we recommend, you know, short, long, very long term for each, each item. First, if you look at this picture, you see your reservoir there with your ladder and landings. On the right, that's, if you ever wondered, hey, what's in that concrete that the reservoir is built on? Picture on the left is the rebar.
The rebar, yeah.
Yep, it's a sixty-nine, sixty-nine foot diameter, six, six or six and a half foot thick concrete, just giant hockey puck full of rebar. It was eighty-nine and a half loads of concrete. They started at four or five in the morning with concrete trucks, like coming from Sunnyside in shifts. They had a concrete pumper there, you know, backup concrete pumper, because they didn't want to like have something break down, have a cold joint. At any given time, you had three or four concrete trucks in the park. And they just poured concrete all day and the concrete finishers didn't leave until midnight. So it was one pour, one continuous piece of concrete. So anyway.
How many yards do you feel they spent right there on the concrete slab?
I don't have that number in my head. It was eighty-nine and a half truckloads.
So this eleven yards for each, you know, ten carry.
Yeah.
Ten, three, eleven yards.
Yep, yep.
Do the math, Antonio, let us know.
Yeah, yeah, well, like about nine hundred yards.
Here's a calculator, Antonio.
So, so that's the picture of the rebar before the concrete was poured. Oh, sorry, that's not a number I've held in my head for, it was like, reported in January too, so they're having to watch the temperatures. So they had some days they were going to pour it, but then it was a little bit touchy on the roads. And the concrete company didn't want to have all their trucks driving all day on the icy roads that we kept to rain. So finally they had it, that day it was good. They had the concrete, they were coming from Sunnyside, they had a concrete plant in Yakima ready to go. So that if, the thing is you don't want a cold joint, you want to get halfway done and then run out of concrete, right? So they had the concrete tank in Yakima was sent, was ready to go with the same mix of concrete. I think they were sending trucks down. So you had trucks coming from both places, just all day. You have one or two in the yard, ready to pump, ready to pour, how long are you rinsed out and handed back to the plant?
It was a job?
It was, it was, it was a crazy day. Anyway, that's an aside. Pictures are more fun than text, so I wanted to put that picture there, I thought that was kind of fun. First, let's talk about sources. So if you go to the next slide, Josh.
You there, Josh?
Yep, so there are the three wells. It may not be what you normally see, but that's the aerial view of all of your wells. So you've got well four on the bottom left, well five on the right, and well six on the upper left. That's what, that's what your wells look like from the air. Your capital improvements for your wells. Number one is well seven, well eight. We've talked about all, well, the good news is you're already under design. We're going to have hydrogeologists on a design and we're going to site the well, hopefully drill it this winter. And we're going to put it in the video on line next summer. Second, we talked about this already. We would recommend continued inspection and rehabilitation of your wells. Kind of what happened at well four, we'd like to do that before it gets to the point where it destroys the pump. We can call a timeout before it gets there, inspect the well, do the rehabilitation, then you don't have to pay for a new pump and motor. And that forty thousand dollar bill might be more of a, should be five thousand dollar bill. So it's still, still capital outlay, but you're not having to pay for a new pump and motor. And you can schedule it, so you're not doing it right, you know, April or June when it went out, right when it's summer, you can do it in November. When you're, it's okay to be offline for a while. Same thing for well five, well five is, is in good shape, it's been running for you. We took it offline and, and replaced some parts in twenty seventeen, there'd been some wear. So while it's running, there was some wear there, it had been online for fifteen years, there had been some wear. And so we would recommend, because it's such an important source for you, you'll plan in a few years to pull the pump. Look at it off demand period, hopefully well seven's online, so it was, you can take well five offline. Video the well, look to see if, see if it needs any rehabilitation, or any parts on the pump that need to be replaced. Just so you don't have a catastrophic failure in the whole summer, you're being proactive. So we'd recommend that for both wells four and five. Well six is new enough, it's a low enough capacity that, you know, I would say yes, you should think about that as well, but it's a lower priority for funds, certainly. Long term, so that's your short term source. Long term, you'll need a replacement for well four. Well four is, is just an old well, you know, you want to see the last water system plan, we were, we were saying, you can plan to live without well four. And because of everything else that happened, well four became what, a goddess through some summers. And so the long term, you need a, a possible replacement. By long term, I mean not probably in the next ten years, about ten, twenty years. That may be where you're looking at that. So the, the little, the little secret of water supply is, there are some projects we put on here as a lower priority, out farther in the future. Because you go to a funding agency, hey, and decide you want to do that project, you go and say, hey, we're ready to do this project. They'll say, well, is it in your water system plan? It's not your water system plan, then you have to amend your water system plan to add the project. So there's some projects that we like to put on there, they're not a screaming emergency, put on there. So if you're in a place of wanting to do that, you already have it in the planning document and you don't have to backtrack. It's a lot easier for self a funding agency, so you can keep getting those grants and loans. And so both this replacement of well four and additional future wells are kind of that category. I'm not saying it needs to happen now. But in five, ten, fifteen years, you may say, well, seven, eight are great, we want to drill well nine, we need to access more of this shallow water. Okay, it's in your plan. You don't have to do a water system plan amendment, spend a bunch of money planning, you'd rather just go get the money and do the project.
When you say the shallow water, how deep the, how deep they are, the well four and five and six?
So well four, five and six are all seven hundred to a thousand feet deep. So you think about it, you've got different buckets of water going down, right? And there's a basalt in between. So they are in a confined layer, meaning there's a bunch of basalt over the top. That means, and so they are all, well, seven is, well, six is seven hundred and thirty-ish feet deep. Well, five's in the same range, well, four is closer to a thousand feet deep. And so again, it's always good news and bad news, right? The good news is that water that's really deep is covered with a big layer of basalt, so it's generally pretty high quality water. You know, some sand issues at well six, some bacteria issues at well four, but you know, well five, great water quality. Generally that deep water is great water quality. Bad news is over time, number one, it's really hard to get any water rights for that. Number two, a lot of places are seeing that groundwater a little. And so over time, you know, there was this much water under there, but it's starting to go down. You're not, there's not as much water down there. And so a lot of cities right now are saying, all right, what are we going to do? Where, where do we go for more water? And so that's where that shallow bucket of water, so that's essentially from the surface down to around here, like a hundred eighty to two hundred feet deep. That's the sand and growl and all the alluvial deposits that are over the top of the first basalt layer. It's essentially the same water that if you build a house and drill a well, generally you're probably drinking the same water. It, and it's kind of continuous, the Yakima River is all the shallow water. Again, good, good news and bad news, I'll do this online. Good news is there's plenty of water, right? There's rivers full of water, there's a lot, like plenty, there's, there, it's an adequate water supply there. Bad news is you look at water quality issues. And so when we drill well seven, we're only going to go down a hundred and eighty feet, just hit the top of the basalt layer and we're going to stop. And we'll just, we'll case down, you know, fifty feet or so, and then we'll be pulling water from that, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy feet down to a hundred and eighty feet, we'll be pulling that water. And that's where you're saying, you know, maybe we get two hundred, maybe we get three hundred, maybe we get four hundred. But they're hoping for that, depending on, on the exact aquifer, when we pump test it, when we drill it, test it, what we get. The bad news is a lot of the wells in the lower valley have nitrate issues, right? So there's a pretty reasonable chance that you're going to have nitrate issues in the well. We do, take a step back, we look at it, most likely we'll be able to blend it with the water from your other wells. Unless it's crazy high and then we're, then we'll have to reevaluate, there's no way to predict it. You have to drill it and find out. Unless it's crazy high though, we'll be able to say, all right, you don't have any nitrates in well five. So we'll blend the water with no nitrogen in well five, the water with nitrates in well seven. And that will average out to something that's below your, below the requirement of the state. So I'm telling you this ahead of time, because we may have this all conversation again when we drill it. And, and, and that's, that's something I know I've talked to council about all along, but I don't, I don't want to forget it. And so one thing we're working with the city on is, is having public works with one of our, our people go around and sample a bunch of the wells all around town. And I mentioned this last time I was here. I'm going to be sending a list to the city, hopefully this week of, of locations of people's wells around town. In the hope that a public, your public works staff, one of our people can go around and walk on doors like, ask nicely if we can sample their well, water, so that we can just do an actual test of all the water around town. Try to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for a really high nitrate well. Because that's not how we want to spend the city's funding package. Is that, that was a long answer to that question. Okay. You guys aren't asleep yet, so that's great.
That was interesting.
Good, good, thank you, I, I appreciate it. I want to make sure you guys have the information you need. And there's a lot of history that goes into some of this. And so sometimes when something's happening, you know, why is this this way? Well, back in twenty thirteen, back in two thousand and seven, there's always a, there was a long answer. So that's, that's, that's the idea, that's the buckets of water, that's why well seven and eight will be that shallow. The other reason is the city had water rights, right? And so we didn't, we're not going to talk about water rights very much tonight, because you have enough water rights, you're in good shape, unlike some other cities. Now, that's just a legal right from ecology to pump for water you use. And so you have those different buckets of water going down, have different water rights. They're not going to be the same water right for Yakima River water, shallow groundwater, for deep groundwater, for really deep groundwater. You have different water rights. So you have a water right for wells four, five and six that you're using. But you pretty much use it all. Like even, you, you're at capacity with that deeper aquifer water, right? And so in twenty fifteen, sixteen, the city went to purchase additional water rights. They're successful in finding a water right and purchasing it and, and moving it to Napton. But in order to do that, it was actually from Kiditzas County, it was Yakima River water, Kiditzas County. Moved it all the way, moved, it's, it's more complicated than that, moved it all the way down the river and turned it into groundwater, right? But it has to be the shallow groundwater, you can't all of a sudden move it to a deep water. So you have this water right sitting there that you can use, but none of your wells are at that aquifer. And so that was part of the whole purpose of well seven and possibly eight, is now we can access that water right. Otherwise, it's sitting there, you own that water, but you don't have any way to pump it. So that's the other reason for this. Cool? Any questions on sources? All right, let's go to storage. We talked about this a little bit already. For capital improvements, you know, you've got, well, well, reservoir one, which you can see in the picture there, you can kind of even just see from the picture. Coatings on reservoir two look a lot nicer than reservoir one. And it's not all about appearance. The reason you want to replace coatings is if the coating's degraded, then the metal starts to rust. And so those, that metal, like, like for reservoir two, it's, at the bottom it's five eighths, it's four and a few quarters inch steel. At the top it's a quarter inch steel, and they make it that way. So you, those coatings are protecting the steel. Once the steel starts to rust, then you've got more damage to repair. So that's why we'll harp on checking coatings, placing coatings, it's because you're protecting the steel. And so we would recommend, you know, reservoir one's going to need recoding. If you want to do it right, it also needs seismic rehabilitation, like we talked about earlier. It has a little ring wall foundation that current seismic codes, right, it would not meet it, you know. You look at little ring wall, just a little concrete wall around the perimeter for reservoir one. And to the sixty-nine foot diameter concrete hockey puck for reservoir two, that's the difference in seismic codes right now.
I remember when our park just had the little silver one.
Yeah.
I'm like, ah, what happened to our park?
Yeah, yeah, I kind of got turned into a state facility. That's part of why I really don't, we keep well seven away from that park. Because you already have too much in that park.
Yeah, I'm like, yeah, that's not pretty. And then they're all fenced up, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. To the point of the seismic coding, you'll notice the reservoir one and two are about right next to each other. That's because we looked essentially at, okay, the seismic combination, reservoir one doesn't meet correct codes. There was an earthquake and it fell over. We don't want it to hit reservoir two. And so that's part of why those reservoirs aren't right next to each other, is we wanted to move reservoir two far enough away to protect it. So that it wouldn't, even though its foundation is adequate, we don't want it to get hit if reservoir one fall over. So, and then we talked about again, there's some safety improvements that if you're already going to recode it, you're already doing some work on it. Here's the problem, you do safety improvements, you're welding on the tank, right? Welding on the tank, you've damaged the coatings, you have to replace the coatings. Your coating's a battle, how are you going to patch a little patch when all the rest of the coatings are slept on? So really, both, both, you know, logically it makes sense to pair these all together, but also from a cost perspective, you know, little projects are going to cost more for the amount of work you get done than if you do a big project. So you're going to do this, do it all, do the seismic, do the coatings, do the, do the improvements all at once. And we'll see with another city, we're doing a, we're looking at a hazard mitigation funding and saying, look, if the foundation doesn't meet code, that's a hazard. Please give us money, trying to see if we can get money. This is a hard project to fund, coating reservoir is, is very expensive, but the funders just don't want to fund it. And so that makes it really hard to find. They say it's maintenance, but.
They don't want to fund it, so where do you get the money then?
Exactly, exactly, that's the problem, right? That's the problem we're trying to let into, but a lot of funders say it's an improvement. That's the problem we're trying to let into, but a lot of funders say, it's an improvement, like, it's an $800,000 improvement, how are we supposed to pay for that? Or a million dollars, it's a very expensive project. And so that's where we're looking at, can we package it with seismic improvements of saying, alright, look, reservoir has seismic issues, earthquake, it might fall over. Give us money for that. Do that, then we're gonna have to reduce some coating repairs, so maybe then we can just take a little bit of money somewhere else to recode the whole thing. Trying to find ways, because you're not the only city that has a reservoir in this, in this place. And so we're working on this, we have, working on this for another city, we have another one in mind, and then reservoir one is another candidate, where if we're successful, it's kind of the same, if we're successful somewhere else, we find that the funders will buy that, that angle, and then if we can make it a common case to get money, then we'll be talking to you guys in a couple of years, it's granted too. So I'll talk to you guys and see if we can come up with something to maybe make some of the projects like this happen.
But there was no insurance covering those, those water towers?
Did you have, they are insured, yes. The city carries an insurance policy on them.
But it doesn't cover...
It may not cover some of that.
The maintenance, or the...
Yeah, no, it certainly doesn't cover coating for years.
That's right, yeah, it doesn't cover that.
And I don't know if it covers earthquakes or not. It might, but even then, your reservoir, even if it covered it, you'd be offline for a long time.
It's covered nothing, my donation is there. For sure, you know? Not good insurance.
It's the fine print, it's the fine print, right? And so that's where we'll always recommend to, to look at your coatings regularly, try to keep your coatings up. And this is a project, truly, I would say this is a really good project to do as soon as possible, but I know that you have, right in the middle of well seven, you have some rate increase fatigue from previous projects, and so in the plan, we put it out a little bit in the future to give you some time to repair, and hopefully we can find some grant. Mr. Lynn keeps coming in with million dollars.
Yeah, we're gonna have to be her best friend.
Yeah, I know, you know, like, yeah, be nice to him. So that's it for storage. One of your big improvements in the last water system plan was build a reservoir. You did that, you did a lot of the most important improvements for our blast water system plan, you did. That's why when we watched capacity, you were good, you didn't have any capacity improvements, because the city did that effort, addressed a lot of its highest priority. So that's why we're moving now into the, or the maintenance of like, stuff that's old and willing to be replaced or maintained or upgraded. Now, we'll talk about your chlorination system. So you were required to chlorinate and maintain residual in your water system. Your chloration system is mounted at well three, and it doses in the vault by the reservoir. Well four, you may turn a special chlorination system on there because of all this issue with well four, that's basically the plan to DOH. Let me know if you have questions, when you guys look at that. Call, call, again, recommend calling the DHO engineer and square in everything within before you start. This is your chlorination system, so on the upper left is the dosing system and a cabinet, chlorine is corrosive, so that's why it's in a cabinet, invented. On the upper right is your, are your current chlorine tanks. On the lower right is the vault where it's injected, and the lower left is the inside view of the vault where it's injected. You'll see the full meter there, and that's where your chlorine is currently injected. You've got some operational issues, you've bought some equipment to, to, to upgrade it, but there's some additional cost of installing the upgrades. It would, it would help the system, it would help address some of those operational issues, so we recommend moving forward with that. It is a cost, and I know that that's a cost, I don't take that, that lightly. But if I, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't tell you that that would help your system. Well, that addressed all the, all the operational issues with your chlorine system? Probably not, it takes regular maintenance and upgrade, you're always gonna have to keep doing things, but, but this, this upgrade that it was suppliers proposed, and I've reviewed it, would be helpful. And so I would still recommend doing that. The other thing on here that's kind of a possible future, we didn't even really scope it because it's too much of an unknown, is just the nitrate. At well seven and eight, if there's nitrate, we won't know until we drill it. You know, is it 2 milligrams per liter, 5 milligrams per liter, 10, 15, 20? For a 20, it's gonna be tough. For a 10, we can make that work with the other wells. There's the possibility that you may need some sort of treatment. Hopefully, again, we'll just blend it with the water from the other wells. But if it is really high, then we'll have to totally revisit, have a brand-new conversation about what we do with that. But there's not even enough information to speculate, so we have to just move forward and cross that right from here. I wish I could tell you all the answers, but I would be lying. Telemetry. Here is your telemetry system, I promised you a picture. As we talked about earlier, it's in good shape, you just replaced it. Josh, can you go to the next slide? But, in the long term, you'll need to continue to operate and replace it. So the screen you'll see there in the center, that's the brain, that's what lets the operators change the set points when the wells come on and off. There are a bunch of little gray circles there that, if they turn green, it means the pump is running, if they turn, other ones that if they turn red, there's an alarm and somebody's getting a call. But that's the screen, when the guys go to make adjustments, they go to the booster station, they're looking at that screen. Behind all that screen is, you have a right-hand corner, a bunch of wires. You open up that cabinet, it's just wires everywhere.
Are you, are you my expense?
Yep, yep, just makes me glad not to be an electrical engineer, because that's what they do. So that's your telemetry system.
I know, I know all those cables.
You, you got it? Alright, well...
He's the man.
Yeah.
And he's just down the street, just down the street around the corner.
Alright, well, we're going, I don't, that's why I call the electrical engineer. Next slide, we'll talk about your distribution system projects. Again, I liked pictures, these are pictures from the 2016 upgrade of the water mains. If you look very closely, I think you'll recognize some buildings around town. You replaced a bunch of water mains, but there's, there's a lot of room for additional water main replacement. We want to improve fire flows, when they open a hydrant, there's at least 1,500 GPM there. We want to improve what's called looping, which is what I was talking about earlier, when you talk about the skeleton in your systems, you have, you have a water fire over here, you want to make sure you have enough big water mains to get the water there or here, so that it can kind of stay in the system. You don't want dead ends that just go out, because then you get really stale water at the end. And we want to reduce leakage. The second item is to, to replace 18 and undersized water mains. So we have four, undersized, we mean generally smaller than eight, you know, six is maybe okay, but you know, those four-inch water mains, think about the size of straw, it's a little straw, you can only suck so much water through it, so a lot more water through a big straw. So we want to put in, generally, any water main's gonna be at least eight inches.
Eight inches, amazing.
Eight inches, at least. Some of your six inches probably okay, but a lot of the four-inch, we looked at upgrade. Thirdly, we look at replacing your remaining, you know, 3,000 feet of AC pipe. Stuff's been there, unfortunately, they thought it was the great thing in the seventies, and it turns out it really wasn't a good way to make water pipe. So cities all were hard replacing it as they can. And then finally, like we talked about already, look at installing an AMR, which is automated meter reading system for your water meters. So they turn on the radio, it pings all the meters, and it will just pop up, you have a visual interface that shows, yep, we do auto-mock, didn't get some, could drive around and hit the rest. Those are your distribution system efficiencies. Part of this plan, we did a hydraulic model of your system, and so some of our staff came down, worked with public works staff, and flowed some hydrants, they used that information to calibrate the model. So Josh, can you go to the next slide? We did a hydraulic model, the model of fire flow and pressures you see at your system, and so this is out, this is out, I didn't put this on, on here, I'm sorry. This is 2043, at max day, so this is in 20 years, on the hottest day of summer. And then we go try to open a fire hydrant. So it's, it's worst-case scenario, but you know, we're trying to plan ahead, DHO wants us planning ahead, and so that's, that's what we've got, to look ahead. And you'll see the nodes here are color-coded, and they're color-coded based on what we project the fire flow availability to be at that node. Not every node here is a fire hydrant, there's not actually a hydrant at every location. It gives you a sense of what the, the pressure requires. So blue means higher than 1,500, that's good. The other colors are progressively less, and so red is the worst. And so red, you would be, you know, where you'd look at, you're probably not gonna have this, you're gonna have less than 1,000 GPM of fire flow there. In 2020, on the hottest day of summer. Even now, at max day, there are some deficiencies, you know, this isn't to say, but I, I wanted just to go to the big picture, go to kind of the end of the planning period, give you the view. And so, you know, all of those improvements we talked about on the last page, then, if you go to the next slide, I've superimposed them over your water system. And so these, these then are the water mains that we have in the plan, recommend replacing. Some in the next 10 years, some out in the 10 to 20 years. And you'll see, we highlighted, they kind of line up, if you go back and forth between the two, they will kind of line up with some of those red dots, right? Trying to upsize the water main in the areas with low fire flow, to get their fire flow up. If you go to the next page, we'll see the south side of town. And so again, same, same deal, you see your color-coded dots, you have some kind of interior areas that are lower, those are basically smaller, smaller diameter water mains. A lot of the blue dots are on 8-inch water mains, a lot of the red dots are on four or six. So then you go one more page, ta-da, more improvements. And so here are, again, are those generally smaller diameter water mains, it's not all of them, we're not, no way we're gonna do all this, right? So we tried to pick the key ones, it would, it would replace a lot of your undersized mains, try to target those. It's not like we're just, we're saying replace them all, because that's a lot of money. But these are the projects we currently have in the water system plan, for your distribution system. Any questions on that? Alright, next slide. Operation maintenance. And so there are some things that you will do in the course of operation maintenance, that's more than just a daily thing, it's a larger capital expenditure. And so we are, we include a few of those in your water system plan. The first one is coating evaluation of your reservoirs. So we talked about how important coatings are. The thing is to check readily, and that's a much less expense, you know, it's 800, a million, 12, 1.2 million to replace the coatings. It's like 10,000 to 20,000 in another way, the coatings, bring in a coatings expert. We have a guy we work with, we do that, where he comes in, he does tests on the coatings, he looks at it. They drop a submarine drone inside the reservoir, and swim it around and take a bunch of pictures inside the reservoir. It used to be a diver had to go in in a suit, which sounds incredibly cost-effective to me, but we can actually, bad job, Matt.
Sorry for that guy.
Yeah, yeah, they actually like, it's like live water.
They yored down the tank, and then they go in?
No, no, they actually leave it full, they spray them off in a, in a, in a diver suit, they spray them with chlorine, and then they dive down into the tank, and swim around in the tank with active water, that's, that's how it's been done for a long time. We have a submarine drone now, so nobody has to go in the tank, we spray it off, and it just has a long cable, and they swim it around, take pictures. And so that's a much less expensive effort, and so we recommend that, like, every five years for reservoirs. You know, reservoir one probably is due late time for that, just to give you a, like, how much life do you have left? And reservoir two, we can recommend you put that on every five years schedule to evaluate the coatings inside and outside. The reason you want to do this, reservoir one's probably too far gone. With the coating life, and I know it's getting, getting, tell me if you guys, if you need me to just tear through it, I want to make sure you have good information. The way coating life works, for, for, when you first paint it, there's a range of time where you could top coat it, you know, it's like your house, you can put another coat of paint on it. But there gets to a point where the coatings are so old, that they're not adhering to the steel well enough, so if you top coat it, the, the undercoating's still gonna fail and it'll all fall off. So even if you top coat it, it'll just all peel off, right? And so that's where, just like an old fence, where, we did this in college, I hated it, just like, you're just out there with a scraper taking everything off, right? And so for a reservoir, then, you're sandblasting it all the way back to the seal, and then recoding it. And so reservoir one is already in that territory, I don't think there's any way that you're gonna be able to top coat that tank, certainly not on the inside, it's already flaking off. So that's why it's so expensive, is we have to blast all the coatings off and then recode it. Reservoir two, though, should still be good. And so that's why I recommend those regular inspections, so that we get in that timeframe where they say, alright, you've got about five years left. And you know, okay, in five years, we're gonna top coat it before those existing coatings fail. You know, they'll blast off a few spot areas that maybe, you'll go find the trouble areas, blast them off, and then top coat the whole thing. And you're not paying for a full, all that blasting and containment, you're just paying for the paint. So that's, that's why we say, Rick, not just because we want to use our submarine drone every five years, which, that's fun, but that's not why, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna retire on that. The guys that get to do it love to get to go do that rather than sit in the office. But, but it's so that you can know where your coatings are at, and top coat it before you get into the meeting to blast it. We recommend your source meters be calibrated regularly, so that your production, all the water you're pumping, you're coating accurately, that helps with the SL. We put some projects in there replacing upper valve by fire hydrants. I know the last time we did a water main job, there were a bunch of water, they had to do some pretty big shutdowns, because a lot of the valves wouldn't work to isolate. They shut all the valves, the water main was still on. So we put some money in the plan, out five years, to just replace valves, just so you have that, you're building that contingency towards that and hydrants. You have generators in two of your wells, well, five and six both have generators, so the power goes out, you keep pumping water. Those need to be serviced regularly, you should have a service deck come to do the maintenance, it's just a diesel engine, right? So just like any other diesel engine, you gotta, you gotta do maintenance on it. And then finally, your recirculation pump has a control valve, which you, look in the picture in the bottom, you see that stainless steel thing? With all the copper all over it? That's a control valve, and that helps your, your recirculation pump keep the two reservoirs at different levels, it keeps them operating. So that, that recirculation pump, that valve, as well as you have some automated valves in big, really big vault in the middle of the park, you've got some automatic valves that say, alright, reservoir one's low, open it, let some water bleed over, okay, it's full shut. And it controls the two, the two reservoirs, because if you think about it, running reservoirs at different levels is complicated. Those just need to be serviced regularly. You know, they, they, as long as they're running, as long as they're operating, it's all good, but when they break, then it's a headache. And so you need to be able to, to tap those services on a regular basis, like, once a year, be good. So, all this has costs, and that's the not fun part to talk about, is what does this all cost? If you look at the next, the next two slides, I've broken it down into 10-year, 10-year projects, which is essentially from now out to 2033-ish, and then the 20-year projects, which is 2033 to 2043. All the projects are on the left, those are all projects we've already talked about, I won't go through them again. But all the bolted ones, the black ones, are the 10-year projects. The ones that are grayed out are 20-year. So why don't you be able to see here all the projects, but here are the ones. And then on the right, there's, there's the distribution by cost of the projects. You see a lot of money towards storage, that's the seismic and the coatings for reservoir one. Source is well seven, is included in this, and then distribution is, is some of, some of the water mains we talked about. Go to the next slide, that is the 20-year projects. So now you'll see on the list on the left, different projects are bolted, some of them, some of them, like the O&amp;M projects are bolted and bolted. And some of the stuff that was done by then is grayed out. And at this point, you see out in the 20 years, you're looking mostly at future wells that you may need in the future, and replacing more of your distribution system. So that's kind of the split, to give you a sense of where the money is going. That make sense? Any questions?
Yeah.
I need to drink a water, I'm sorry. Yeah, usually we give these presentations, we tag-team them with two of us.
We're almost there.
The Zara wasn't able to make it, unfortunately. Well, I'll have to bring Zara down to a future meeting, so you can say, see, she's the one that did, she, you know, she did a lot of the groundwork for this. So, next slide, if you go to it, Josh, so the fun parts, fun parts to talk about projects, right? Boo hoo, build, build stuff, replace stuff, you know, that's, that's the stuff we get excited about as engineers, that's the fun stuff. The sad side, the bad news of all of this is it all costs money. And so we won't go into it in great detail, we, we do financial projections, we look at your finances, we worked with Josh on, on a giga of finances, and then we project it out, and look at, okay, you know, assuming the city grows, you know, we try to use conservative, we don't, we don't, we're not saying we're gonna grow a ton, we're gonna have lots of money. We say, we're gonna grow a lot of sleep, that'll increase our revenue. We project out your expenses, because inflation is gonna keep making salaries go up, it's gonna make materials go up. Project that all out, and then we say, okay, how can the projects fit in here? How can we pay for the projects? Can we pay for the projects? And the goal is, you know, your, your fund balance, we don't want to spend all your money and take a negative. You want to have, lead your fund balance, your water fund to at least be constant, hopefully increasing it a little bit, so you have more contingency. That's all on the water system plan, it would just be a huge table, it wouldn't, it would, it would put us all to sleep if I put it up on the screen. But the upshot for you guys at this level is, number one, your current, your base rate for a water meter, the three-quarter inch water meter is $54.85. So that's your, that's your three-quarter inch base rate, your base rate for a one inch is like $56.85. But then you have overage, so if, you know, somebody uses more water than the, than the minimum, they have to pay more, right? And so if you look at your average, you know, you look at ERU, what does an ERU use? ERU uses, on average, for the city of Mapton, 404 gallons per day. So in the summer, that's gonna be more, the winter's gonna be less, but that's your average water use. So if you look at that over a month, you come up with how much water, the average month water of, of a single-family house. And so then when we put that through the calc's for overage, that's looking at about a $70 water bill. And so people are free when we have to pay some overage, there are some cities where the limit's so high, Matta was 20,000 gallons before you have to pay an overage, very few people ever get anywhere near it, right? And that, that essentially, there's some lost equity there, where people that don't use very much water are having to pay the same amount of, of a bill as people with a lot of water. And so Mapton's water bill, not to throw Matta one a bust, they did a great job. But Mapton's water system is a little bit more, what we call equitable, because the little old lady who lives by herself, isn't gonna pay, she can pay the base rate, right? While the big family that has a big lawn is gonna use a lot of water, so they're gonna pay more, so they're, using more water, they have to pay more water. And so that's, that's kind of the general, the general, you know, that's, that's a whole other, kind of rate equitability, and all that, it's a whole, it's a whole other conversation for another day. But this is just to give you a sense for what, what your kind of average single-family house water bill is. And $70 is, is not insignificant, there are cities that are higher, but it's, it's not a, not a cheap water bill. And that's really a reflection of the fact that the city's done a lot of work over the last 10 years, you know, you're paying back those loans, so you have to be able to pay, pay the bills on those loans.
People think they pay tremendous for water here, and we have to show them that, you have to break it down. Because they're, oh, my water bill was $243, we're like, no, your bill was not $243, that's your water, your sewer, your garbage, and, you know.
Yep.
And service, and service, and service.
Yeah, and that's where you'll see...
Because there's three services in one.
You'll see a lot of cities...
I don't understand that, why there's so much service.
Service, I pay $70 in service in my water.
Is that a utility tax?
No, no, it's service and service, service for water, service for service, service for garbage and service for service.
You know, there is a utility tax that the city charges and that funds general fund, that funds the street stuff and that police and that kind of stuff. But that's where you'll see the water, you, you can look, you can almost look in a city and see what their, their water and sewer bills are and say how recently they've had major upgrades. For small cities, bigger cities are doing these kind of upgrades continuously. So if their water rates are really low and their sewer rate's really low, you're like, I'm sure they're enjoying that, but they're due for some big upgrades. Cause, cause when you do the upgrade, you take out the loan, then you have to raise your rates to pay it back. And so that city I was seeing earlier, it has just like gold all over their deficiencies. Their water rates are fairly low, but they're, they're gonna have to pay for those improvements somehow. And so they'll, they're doing a rate study right now, looking, okay, what do we have to do with our rates? How can we change our rates, increase our rates to be able to address the fact that we're gonna run out of water? So, sorry.
Yeah, California's there.
Yeah, yeah, it's even worse there.
Actually not, California pays eighty dollars and I know it's happening.
No, but they're running out of water.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they pay little bills, the bills is crazy.
In some of those states, they don't have grass lawns. Like you go to Colorado and everybody has gravel lawn, like gravel, they don't have a lot of, yeah, because the water is so limited. And so you went into Washington, we're like, green lawn, man, it's, it's.
Everybody likes the green lawn.
It's great, it's beautiful, yeah, no, I agree, I like the same thing, it looks good.
Dry, I think.
It does, but there are places where they don't have enough water for people to do it, or it's so expensive that it's not worth it for people. And that makes me sad, cause. Yeah, so we're not there yet, fortunately. So, that's your average bill, capital improvements, you know, all those ten year improvements add up to about seven point seven million dollars for the next, over the next ten years. And that's taking all of your distribution improvements and saying, we're gonna do about a third of them in the next ten years, we're gonna do two thirds. That could change, if Mr. Lundy comes in with more money, we'll take it, we'll do more sooner. But that's, that's kind of how we split it up. We did a very basic analysis of your rates. We, we assumed that all of the funding for this, this seven point seven million was loan at thirty year term at one and a half percent interest. There's some variability there. It could be a twenty year loan, which means your payment will be higher, which would be a bigger effect. Or, it's been the case in the past, you get grants. So like, this money that might have just walked in the door today, now that's a chunk of that seven point seven million that you don't have to pay it back. So that brings the rate impact down. So we always have to show it as loan, we can't really assume we get grant. But as we work through the funding process with you, we'll try to get grants for any of this and that offsets impact. So what we, what we did then, you'll see there, is if we looked at, okay, put these improvements out as loan payments, what do we have to do to pay these loans? And we looked at, at just a kind of overall basic rate increases. Might get super complicated, look at basic rate increases. To be able to pay for these improvements with the loan we talked about, you're looking at a three percent rate increase this year and next year. And then five year, five percent increases for the years after that, for the rest of the tenure period. Part of the way we set this up, is we know that if the city has had some rate increase fatigue recently. And so try to put the rate increases off a little bit longer, so that at the time you're pursuing the project, you can do the rate increase. But I'm not coming and saying, you need rate increases now, which is what some cities are having to look at to deal with stuff. That three percent this year and next year is really just inflation. Especially with so much inflation, three percent doesn't even keep up with inflation. But you're having to pay more for everything, all the equipment, you know, the salaries go up, because people have to still go live off that. And if they can't keep up with inflation, and so at least have like a three percent or something like that, really kind of have to look at that every year, just to even keep pace with expenses. I don't like talking about rate increases, I'm just, don't, don't shoot the messenger, please. It's my job to tell you, you, this is what you have, this is what you have to do if you want to do these projects, you want to keep your water system long term. One of the things I would recommend, and this is what some other cities, we're working on a number of water systems right now, what some cities have done, is to actually do a rate study. We do those sometimes, we have a financial consultants we can recommend, that look at your projects, they look at your rates, they do a deep dive of your rates and try to find, not just how do we change, how do we raise rates? But look at, like, are our rates fair? Like, sometimes you find, some people are not paying very much money, some, some classes not getting a lot, a lot of water. So some cities like all the schools, use a ton of water, but they only pay a little bit, so is that fair? You know, essentially then all the other rate payers are subsidizing the schools. Sounds, yeah, that's fine, all the kids go there, we mind with that. But that's something that you look at in a rate study. So that's the plug for a rate study. If you guys want it, we do them, we can set you up with a financial consultant, this isn't me trying to get work. I hate rate studies. So I'm not, I'm not eager to do it, but I would recommend that you do it, just to make sure that your rates are dialed in. Cause what you don't want to have happen is five years down the road, you realize, oh no, our water fund is in the hole, we should have worked at this. So just to be proactive, we suggest you do that and then you update it every five years, just to make sure you're on track. Again, that's not a shameless plug, that's just, uh, good, good, good rate management. Okay, we're almost there. Potential sub funding sources, so go to the next slide, Josh. There are a number of funding sources here, USDA rule development, you've used before, that funded the reservoir and water runs. Community development block grant, that is paying for, actually USDA is paying for part of all seven, community development block grants paying for the rest of all seven. Also paid for the reservoir, also paid for some work at the treatment plant. Drinking water state revolving fund helped pay for some of your improvements a few years ago. Public worst trust fund you've used before, that paid for some work at the treatment plant. All these are standard funding programs, we do lots of apps to them, they're a place you could go for a loan, grant, some combination. And there's some specialty programs like C, which is county, they're paying for some of the park and ride funds. ARPA, which is just walked in outdoor tonight. And legislative appropriations, and that's where legislators won't really listen to me, cause I'm a consultant, that's where they'll listen to you guys. And so that's where you lobbying your legislators, sometimes that can be an excellent way to get some money, they're right in the state budget, they spend it wisely.
Hey Josh, really quick, who was it that gave me their number when we went to that workshop a couple of weeks ago?
Oh, I went to sleep.
It was, I didn't.
Can you go back one slide, Josh?
Josh. Josh, are you there?
Yes ma'am, hold on. I can't share in common at the same time. Yeah, so, uh, let's see here.
Who was it that I, we talked to at that workshop?
I don't recall off the top of my head, boss.
Just relax. Was it Senator Honeyford?
No, it wasn't Honeyford, it was, um. Come on, Josh.
Ryan, hold on. I, I don't have the card, boss, sorry.
Okay, so we, we did meet a, a representative, actually, I can't remember who it was. But he gave us his, he gave me his person, personal cell phone number and said to reach out to him if we needed anything, right, Josh?
Yes, you need, you need money.
Yeah, so.
There are a lot of things that would be great.
He told me I needed to write a letter to him at the beginning of the year, if I'm correct.
Yeah, so that's, and that's a place again, where they won't listen to engineers really, because. It's biased, yeah, they would see us as biased. We are, but ultimately, we're working on your behalf to try to get your project for what you need, and so. I don't want you to spend money on a project you don't need, I would be doing, I would be doing my job if I tried to do so. I encourage you to do a project you don't need. But they will listen to, to you guys, and so that's kind of where you, you can lobby.
I saw that you're there for Mapton.
Yeah, they say, what is your title? I'm an engineer, and I'm like, oh, nevermind. And so that's where you can lobby. I just wanted to point out the bottom picture, some of these pictures, as I went through the pictures, like, just maybe remember again, you know, some of the beautiful sunsets and the mist of skyline and like, what a pretty area this is. And just, just that view is, is beautiful. So funding is pretty boring, you know, pictures, so I.
I like the pictures in here, thank you.
You're welcome.
That one says nice.
Yeah, the presentation, uh, the picture's good, I'm sorry, I'm getting it. It was fun to share, we, we had those already from, from drone pictures, we came, we did some drone pictures of the reservoirs and stuff like that.
You feel sorry now.
Yeah.
Out of speech.
Yep, so we're almost there, though, we'll get there. Next slide, unfortunately, no pictures on this one.
Flip it, Josh. Thank you.
We're basically there, just one thing I wanted to, you know, we talked about ERUs earlier. When you talk to DOH, they have forms that says how many connections you're approved for. And ERUs, connections you're approved for are not the same thing, and that's confusing. And so I just wanted to get the business here, we won't go into great detail of how, how they come up with that. Again, ERUs are equivalent number of single family houses. If your system was all single family houses, how many would there be patient on your water use? DOH connections are single family homes plus multifamily dwelling units, so that's every apartment in a apartment building. Plus your commercial industrial connections. So this is a simplified approach for them, cause they can say, tell us how many, you go count them. But it doesn't work from an engineering perspective for projecting your water use. I just wanted to be clear on that, because when you talk to DOH, they'll say, how many connections you have, how many are approved for? And that doesn't gonna match up with the ERUs. Go to the next slide, just to show you a quick example. Right now, you're approved, we'll just work our way through the table. Top line, right now, you're currently approved for six hundred and seventy one connections. On your WFI, which is the form you submit to help, you have claimed that you have six hundred and thirty two. And that may not be the connections you're billing every month, you may only be billing them parts of months or at times of the year, but that's how many you claim. And again, you know, eight hundred, five hundred and eighty water bills, there may be multiple apartments on one bill, right, from apartment building. And so that's, well, that's the difference between the five eighty and the six thirty two. So if you keep moving across, that means you have thirty nine connections available. And so right now, some of the development, people that are talking and saying, wouldn't use most of that. Next line, if we submitted this plan without that multi-day equalizing storage we talked about, without well seven, they would say, alright, your limit is now six hundred and thirty two. You are out of capacity. And so your, your limit would be six hundred and thirty two, you would have zero available connections. However, when we presented it with the multi-day equalizing storage, rough numbers, and this is just, just rough numbers, they, they may say something different, but this is rough number. You're looking at approved like seven hundred and thirty nine connections that they would approve you for. And so that gives you a hundred and seven, so that gives you room to keep growing this year, keep moving development forward while you work on well seven. Big picture, you get four hundred gallons per minute from well seven or well seven and eight, you're looking at more like a thousand ninety one connections, which is great. And that, and you see the bottom right hand corner, that gives you four hundred and fifty nine connections for growth. So that, that lets the city be out in front of development enough that you're not, you're not having your last connection. So this is kind of an aside, just wanted, sometimes we'll talk about this and. So with that, go to the next slide, I'm happy to answer any questions, again, another, thank you. You see, actually, if you look at reservoir two, you can see it's not painted yet. So this was after they built it, but before they painted it. But the picture with the, the, I think of the fog colors, you can see the trees.
I like that picture for the city hall.
Yeah, it's beautiful, isn't it? Yeah, let me know if there are any of these pictures you want, we have all of these. And, and then you see the, the skyline in the background. Because one picture was enough, Josh, you have, go to one more slide, I have two questions, because I want to share a couple for you pictures. So this one, you can see it's the reservoir, all of that around the reservoir was a scaffolding that they built, you guys might remember that they, it was scaffolding to paint it. And I was down here for something and you just saw the sunset through the scaffolding. Anyway, I just wanted to share, share the pictures. Any questions? Thank you guys for your, your patience, I know that was a long, a long haul.
It was really interesting.
Oh, thank you.
I really found it interesting.
And there, if you want, you just let me know which of these pictures you want, I can send you all of them.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Cause there you go, a lot of questions there.
You have your personal phone, but I can call you. Don't call the city hall, call with him.
Five oh nine, four five three, four eight three three. That is our office number and it rings through to my cell phone.
The next morning.
Yeah, yeah, and what are all your numbers? Nope, nope, always happy to answer questions. Yes, so, you guys thought you were done with me. Do you guys have the handout already?
Which one's up?
For the water use efficiency forum. Okay, so, here's the handout, theoretically, I'll just start as I walk around. Chapter four of the water system plan is water use efficiency. The reason we have to do this is because you have to talk about water rights a little bit, to explain the reason we have to do this.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead, move on to new business, sorry, which is the water system plan update for the presentation, which is on page twenty seven through twenty eight. Oh, B, excuse me, water use efficiency forum, page twenty nine, open to public comments.
So, as there are no public here, maybe some public online.
Is there anyone online, Josh?
Alright, we'll, we'll go through this, don't worry, this will only take two hours. If you want to order second dinner, I understand. So the reason we have to talk about, we have to talk about why we do water efficiency. Water rights have, all, the, the rule of water rights in Washington is use it or lose it, right? You gotta use your water, if you don't use it, you lose it. The problem is, cities are trying to plan ten to twenty years ahead of time. So as a city, if you have a water right to carry you into the third of your future, and you don't use it, you lose it, it defeats the purpose, right? You could only be buying just the water you need, it's not very efficient. So in the early two thousands, the cities, ecology, the legislature all made a deal. And they said, alright, use it or lose it, except for cities. And so municipal water rights are exempt from. So these water rights you bought, you haven't used them since you bought them, the shallow walk before we talked about, you haven't used them since you bought them, you don't lose them, because it's municipal. Cause they want you planning for the farthest in the future, right? The trade off, you know, that was what cities got, and the deal, that's what cities got. The trade off, and it was well worth it, that cities got was having to do water efficiency. So you said, alright, your water rights aren't relinquishable, you have to at least try to save water, try to conserve the water you're using. That was totally worth it, sort of deal. So chapter four of the water system plan is water efficiency. It's looking at the city's water savings and how the city's progress towards required measures. The handout has it all in, I'm just gonna walk through it quickly. City has to establish goals. Here's the deal with the goals. There's no way that's gonna come find you if you don't meet these goals, right? So we established goals, cause you're supposed to set goals, but, and frequently, cities need some of these goals, but it's not like they're gonna be penalized if you, if you, if you don't get it. The second thing is that we, we establish these goals to be reasonable and not to be especially progress. So the two goals that we recommend for the city, we have to do one for consumption, one for production. We recommend, you have, getting your, your leakage under ten percent is, is required, so we can't make that a goal, it's required. Once it's under ten percent, we recommend the city's goal be to maintain it under ten percent. And since that's the rule, it's the rule. The second thing is, your, your current water use per ERU is five hundred and four gallons per day. We recommend a goal of reducing it to two percent, to three hundred and ninety six gallons per day by twenty thirty two. To get a very, very good goal. You have to set a goal. So that's one, there are goals, there are required measures and there are recommended measures. On the second page, you'll see all the required measures. Basically, the city's done that, or we're doing it in the water system plan, during compliance. However, they require, depending on the size of the city, they require that you do a few additional measures. Say, okay, you wanna save water, how are you gonna do it? So we have to come up with measures policies on the saving of water. The good news is, each measure counts for every customer class you apply it to. And so the measures we'd recommend are increasing public engagement efforts, something the city kind of already does, you know, if you send a flyer in the mill about saving water, you DOH has some different things. Put, put a flyer in to, to, to recommend saving water to people, saving water saving tips. The other is to notify customers by many reads, and I believe you do this already as well. Somebody, you know, grandma has a little water bill and then all of a sudden, her water bill goes through the roof. Say, hey, you probably got a leak, like, most likely she didn't, all of a sudden you start using a ton of water. So it's good, you know, anytime somebody's water use just goes through the roof, and I think, or you can correct me, the city kind of already does this as, as part of it. Helps the customer, helps the city. So, we're trying to pick measures that fit with kind of what you're already doing, so we're not adding an extra work. This would be the time that public, we recommend that public be provided an opportunity to comment on these measures. If it goes online, if you guys have any questions, this would be, it has to be a public forum where people can talk about it.
So my only question is, if we don't meet this by twenty thirty two, what happens? On the, reduce the average for residential water?
Ten years we've wrote a plan, we see how we did and establish a goal for the next ten years. Yeah, they just require that we have a plan and there's no follow up. It's, it's in the city's best interest to try to reduce leakage in this water zone. So, so then, and I forgot about this on the water system plan. But for this, then, if, if these are acceptable, we're just looking. But for this, then, if these are acceptable, we're just looking for a motion from you guys to adopt these. And we'll, we already have it written in the plan, and we'll move forward with submitting it to Department of Health. But ideally, if it needs to be adopted by the city, it's just a motion from you guys to adopt these water efficiency goals and measures.
So that does seem to be the time. So we need a motion to move forward for the Water System Efficiency Forum. We'll make a motion.
Make the motion to approve the water, water goals.
Have a motion by Antonio. Can we want a second? Can I say another motion? Is second by Diana?
You don't have to do it, I'm sorry. To get it submitted, the Water System Plan submitted to Health, they started renewing it, it's advantageous. If you wanted to delay, we could delay some of it, but DOH is sort of close to putting the city on the naughty list.
Yeah, we'll just do it. I have a motion by Antonio, second by Diana, all in favor.
The other thing I should have, I should have mentioned to our system plan is, we're at a point of being almost ready to submit it to Department of Health. That's why we're presenting it, and again, like we talked about at the beginning, that kicks it over to them. They have three months to review it. They'll give us comments, we'll go back to board. And eventually, they'll be ready to approve it, you'll adopt it, we'll approve it. So what we're looking from you guys, if what I presented tonight was acceptable, we're looking for a blessing from you guys, essentially, to go ahead and submit it to Health. If you want to do that, just as I go on top, if you want to do a motion, it's mine, if you want to. We're gonna get, we're gonna get, it's gonna be close. Thank you, guys.
So we're gonna go ahead, go ahead and go to my mayor and councilor. Preliminary budget presentation, sorry. Josh, are you awake?
Of course, I'm awake.
Sweet guy, you're on camera.
Okay, so this is the preliminary budget for two thousand and twenty-three. I know, nobody wants to talk about numbers all night, especially after Jamin's very brief presentation, I know, but there was a lot of information to go through there, so. I'll just touch on some of the, some of the major things and some of the trends. And then we'll, we'll really dive into it, you know, after, after, when we hit the budget workshop on the fifteenth. So, the general fund, if we're watching, like I said, we'll just look at the bottom-line numbers there. We, so the general fund, as everyone probably remembers, funds the, it funds the parks, funds the cemetery, it funds the PD, and then it funds the admin staff. So these numbers that we have currently are, so this is operating in a perfect world, that's saying that we have staff at full capacity. That is giving the police department their either three officers or two officers and one code enforcement, depending on which way they slice that. And that's, I would say, that's taken a couple turns, because there's also, they were, so we've talked about having on-staff code enforcement officer. There are also services being offered by YVCOG, so we have to, for code enforcement, so we've kind of talked about that, and we're gonna talk about the pros and cons, and get a better idea of which direction we want to go with that, but that's where, I would say, but that, that's in the works, and then, you know, all of our basic numbers for the other things there. That's where the, so I would say, that's why the services numbers is higher, and the wages is considerably higher, depending on who we hire, what we hire for, what we do. So, once I see, we can see that the trend there. The cemetery, we actually see comes down just a little bit, because we, we had a loan that we had to pay back to perpetual care, and that's actually paid off, so, I would say, so we've actually paid the loan off that we borrowed from ourselves. I would say, in two thousand and, it looks like it was, so we borrowed in two thousand and nineteen, and we had to pay back in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. So, I would say, you've probably noticed, anybody that's been here from, from previous would notice that those big numbers that were in streets from two thousand and twenty-two are mostly moved over, and we still have big numbers in streets for two thousand and twenty-three. That's because some of those big projects that were supposed to go into streets didn't actually happen yet. They're actually scheduled for next year now, when they were supposed to be scheduled for, for two thousand and twenty-two. So that's where that big number is. This is all, sorry, I should have touched on the fact that this is all expenditures. So we're not talking about the money in on this side, this is all the money out. This is, so this is what we have to pay to stay afloat, to survive, so. Rather than what, what's coming in is on, is on another time. And then, so if we look at EMS, you can see where they have that big jump in twenty-two. They go, they stay, you know, at ten or twelve, thirteen, twenty-three is for twenty thousand, and then they go to fifty-six in two thousand and twenty-two. That is the, that is for the, what do they call those things? What are those things called? The SCBA's that were purchased for them in twenty-two that were authorized as part of their ARPA money. So, that's where, that's where that spike comes from. I would say, so water, that, I would say, you'll see that same trend has, that has a little bit of a jump, just like it had in, in two thousand and nineteen, because there are a couple of water projects that are scheduled to happen that haven't actually happened yet. But, that's, I would say, so that's where those numbers are coming from. I would say sewer, sewer is fairly consistent. We'll just have to see what happens with the, with the sewer system, you know, as we move forward. And then, I would say garbage is obviously, garbage is always consistent, because it has the, you know, we pay the, we pay the service out, and then they take care of all of the costs and mishaps and all of that fun stuff. So they just sort of has a general upward trend as, as things move on, so. Some of the big things to look at when we get ready to go into the workshop, we're still talking about our COVID or ARPA money, as we call it. So we talked about a splash pad, we've talked about a sprinkler system, we're still waiting for estimates on. So we should have, give or take roughly five hundred thousand or so, I would say, I'll have a, I'll have a more, a more consistent number for that, before we get there, but that we'll still have to try and, try and figure out what we're gonna do with before the end of two thousand and twenty-six. So, we have a little bit of time on that still, but what we need to try to do as a group, we need to make sure that we're focusing that on big projects that are easily accounted for. Because, you know, I know we did a lot of, and there was some, there was some, some things that needed to happen, some pumps that needed changed. I think there was two or, there was three. There was three in, in the water department, and then there was one sewer pump that we still haven't gotten the, the final numbers on yet. But, so we need to, we need to try and put that money into a big project, or a couple big projects, depending on what the, what the system does. So. I know, that kind of, that was just a general overview of things. Is there any major questions that anybody has?
They're tired. It's a long meeting.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Sorry.
You're fine. We knew what we were doing today.
I'm like the next best thing on TV, right?
Okay, so, there's nobody online?
No, ma'am, uh-uh. So like I said, anything that we think of, you know, just like, would just write it down, we're gonna spend four hours on this, you know, in the next couple of weeks. When it's time to talk about it in detail, so. Okay?
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and go on to nine mayor and council member reports. So do anybody have any reports for council members?
I would like to know if we're caught up with the water bills with our people here in town, are we caught up with the water bills? Are we behind? That's what I'd like to know.
What do you mean, behind?
From the COVID payments?
Like we had that one year that people were behind like a thousand or five hundred, or are we all caught up now?
I believe we just have one person on a payment plan still, that's been consistent with their payments, but everybody else hasn't paid off.
Sounds good.
And I only feed? And I only feed?
You only pay your bill?
He sent me a time.
Question? I don't have any question, but I thought we had, I didn't realize we weren't gonna have. The chief wouldn't be here, or Victor, but I've been communicating with Victor a little bit about toys for tots for Christmas. And the other thing he mentioned yesterday was that he wanted to do a coat. Joy, thank you. I am tired. Yeah, coat drunk. So those two things, it would go through the PD, and of course, anybody that can help or wants to help, or we can. I talked to the Dollar General. They had a big toy sale, and they didn't sell all their toys, so I'm gonna find out if, I think it was like three tubs full. They were gonna send back, but I wanna try to make an offer that's, where she can give me an offer and see if we can just purchase them to give us a little jumpstart. But it'll all be ran to the, the Toys for Tots will be ran to the PD, Victor, and the chief. I don't know about the chief yet, because I haven't really talked to him, but.
Well, it'd be nice if we could give them a dollar for each one, because I know they had that seventy percent off.
They did. It's over.
Yeah, and whatever was left, it would be nice if we could.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
For a dollar or fifty cents a piece, you know.
Well, they'll say, well, they're gonna send it back to corporate, but she doesn't really want to, so. Hoping that we can get it for, you know, pretty reasonable.
That would be pretty good.
And then the coat thing, I think if we're gonna do that, we need to get it going, because winners.
That would be good.
Yeah, just hard to, the chief and to sergeant?
Yeah, I have a chief, so, but I'm, the other thing is, I'm going to go tomorrow to meet with Cemetery DM and get the memorial design for Opie, some type. Something for her, so I'll be in the making, and you say you can help me decide where we're gonna put it, and where we can put it. Now, veterans' walls getting closer, so.
I'm ready. I don't have any reports. I don't, do I, anything happening going on? No, I don't, I don't, I really don't think I have anything right now. Yeah, we're just waiting to get one more estimate for the sprinklers for the governor's park. And then we'll be able to start that project, you know. Hopefully, early spring. They thought maybe if the weather was like this, they could start, but we still have to bring it to council. But, I mean, we are gonna be able to use the ARPA, if I'm correct, right, Josh? Some of the COVID. And then the splash pad that we want, nothing big, nothing fancy, just something very simple and basic for the kids to have, because it has to be used on water, is my understanding. On water. So that would, the sprinkler system is considered water, splash pad is considered water. So, yeah. And then, I think that's it. Oh, I know, I had a question for you, about the park and ride, when will that be going in?
So, originally, we planned to do it this year. However, because Main Street's, two, two things, Main Street's gonna happen next year, right? We're gonna do reconstruction from Washington to South Street, and overlay from South Street to Maple, I think, so all, we're gonna tear up the center of town, it's gonna be a mess for a while. But it's gonna look really cool when it's done. We were gonna do the park and ride this year, but as high, you know, with all this inflation and high bid prices, the pavement has been hard to get, and so, you know, you look at that, all of a sudden, if we bid it next year, when there's already a contractor doing this work, there's a good chance we get a better bid, because the payers can say, alright, I'll do that park and ride, the same time I'm in Mafton to pave Main Street. And so we're bumped it to next year in the hopes of getting a better price for you. You know, the funding's, you know, we got so much funding, so we're bumping that to next year to go with, with Main Street.
It's, you know, my main concern is to get that, the governor's, all sides of the highway. Because it looks, it's a nicer, but I know that, you know, have the gravel already laid out there.
Yeah, and that was, I think, City Public Works did that in the past.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, and so, the, and then it may have been, there may have been a deal with the contractor that was already on site, they did some horse trading, and like, hey, we do this, you do that. But, but you know that the scope, like where that, that park and ride is going to be, and so really just recommend is you put the, have to put the irrigation outside of that, and then when the park and ride goes in.
Yeah, and I believe the two that have already turned in their estimates, they already gave us a drawing, right? Josh and they are on the other side, starting?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
So the two things they need to remember is, don't, don't put irrigation where the park and ride is going to be. The other thing is, there is a transmission main from all the wells that runs through the park, and together and into the reservoir, and they should not connect any sprinklers to that. That just runs in.
They're gonna go to.
There's communication fibers along that, and they need to not hit them.
And so aren't they, they said they're going to, on the South Street, right? They had to go into that, if I'm correct?
Right, they were tapping into the.
In the past, I'm just, just the warning, contractors, it used to be that the communication fiber was just a buried fight, like, lines and contractors hit it so many times.
So that, those are the exciting things that are going on right now. So, for, hopefully, early spring, or if they, we can get this all taken care of for the sprinkler system, they can start working on it. So, is that everything?
Yeah, just to let you know, I did, the mayor did text me, that noise you heard, sorry, it's her fault. She said she forgot.
Yeah, okay, okay. So any staff reports? Money, any, Josh, anything?
No, ma'am, nothing else.
Okay, so, with that, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn at nine oh five.